Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, then I think we're ready for CTE Pathways. Turn your hands.
Alright, so tying in with post-secondary success are all of our CTE programs. And a lot of times, I think it might be the same in your situation. I'll go home and talk about work with my husband and he goes, "You're speaking another language." I don't know if that happens to anybody else. But I thought it might be helpful to just give you a really broad overview of CTE because there's so many things involved and then how we relate to some post-secondary. So, CTE is Career and Technical Education. I'm the Career and Technical Education Coordinator. CTE, it's a lot easier to say CTE than Career and Technical Education. So, CTE are programs that are designed to help students achieve success after high school by preparing them for high-skill, high-wage jobs. And a lot of times, we do get arguments from people who have a vested interest, for example, in theater. We have a great theater program. And the teacher always asks me, "Why is theater not CTE?" Well, it's defined by the state of Kansas and they say that theater is not a high-skill, high-wage job. We can argue all we want, but the state says what is it is not high-skill, high-wage and that's what gets to count for Career and Tech Ed pathways. So, CTE is... Technology's really great tonight. There we go. CTE is made up of groups of clusters. So, clusters are when we put different pathways together and kind of group them in areas. So, you can think about our career academies. They are kind of based on clusters. So, we might have multiple pathways in one cluster. So, they just are grouped together and all of our pathways fit within a cluster. I do avoid that word as much as possible, just because of some connotations with it. But that is what it's called. So, in each cluster, then, we have pathways. Pathways is really where most of my focus is in Career and Technical Education. So, these are, and not just groupings of pathways, they're groupings of courses. So, each pathway has at least three courses. Most of them have more, but to get started, we need three. And we have three levels. So, we have the introductory level, the technical level, and the application level. And successful completion of a sequence of courses should prepare a student for a high-skill, high-wage job. And of course, under the pathways, we have the individual courses. As I said, we have the introduction, technical, and application courses that our students go through. So, this is a broad overview of Career and Technical Education. So, talking a little more about courses. So, we have introductory, Career and Tech Ed courses. These classes are general overview of all the different topics in the pathway. So, a pathway is pretty focused. For example, audio/video communications, pretty focused in what you're interested in doing. But our introductory level class is going to talk about radio. It's going to talk about TV. It's going to talk about working for a news station versus working in Hollywood versus working, as my husband does, at a private company in the realm. But the intro class is going to talk about all of those different careers. So, for example, we have Introduction to Law, Business Essentials, Introduction to Manufacturing. So, we're learning a basic skill set in those classes. So, we're just a little slow. There we go. So, this semester, this semester only, we have 58 sections of introductory CTE courses on our schedule, which comes out to 1,342 students that are enrolled only in introductory level classes. So, you'll actually see introductory is our highest amount of CTE enrollment, which is great. That's what we want to see in high school. We want to see exploring different careers. The intro level class, you know, you might take, as I mentioned earlier, audio/video communications, be in that pathway and realize, "This is not right for me." So, then they might enroll in something else. So, we'll have students who are enrolled in multiple introductory level classes. That's how we get such a high number there. Then, of course, we have technical level courses are next. So, the technical level courses are going to narrow that focus a little bit. So, usually, we have in a pathway one or two, possibly two, introductory level courses. By the time we get to technical level, we have two to three to four technical level courses. So, we can start to narrow down that career interest a little bit. So, in a technical level course, they're going to develop some skills and they're going to start working on some projects a little more on their own and, of course, with teacher assistance. So, for example, we have graphic design, sports medicine, welding two. These are more hands-on classes where students are actually taking those projects on themselves. So, this semester, we have 84 sections of technical level CTE courses and 1,670 students. Sorry, I think I said that one was the highest, but I like it's technical level is the highest. So, our students are persisting. They're starting at an introductory level and they're going on to a technical level course. Then...
Can I ask a question? Do they have to take an introductory course in order to take the technical?
In order? No, not in all pathways. Some pathways do require the intro level course. Not all of them do. And our students, as defined by the state, they can be what's called a completer if they take at least two credits or at least three credits in at least two different levels. So, they do not, they can skip introductory, start at technical, and take an application. They can just do introductory and technical and not take the application and still be a completer if they get three credits.
But we, but there are some where we just don't let the high school allow them to do that because we want that introductory class as a prerequisite.
Right. For example, we're working on changing our law class right now. Currently, Intro to Law is not required for Law One. And our Law One teacher is having a lot of trouble because he has half of the class of students who learned Intro to Law and learned a lot of basics and half of the class who didn't and he doesn't know what he should be teaching. So, we're working on making Intro to Law a prerequisite for Law One because it's really hard for them to start that particular program in Law One. However, or at the technical level, but like culinary, culinary essentials is our intro level class. However, if you have experience in a kitchen, you can easily do baking and pastry at technical level class pretty easily. And so, that is not a required prerequisite for the application level, of course, the culinary. So, there's different, just depending on the situation. Is there a slide might be missing? Oh, no, I just messed up. Nope, okay. So, this should say application, not technical level. So, this semester, for the application level, which is our highest level, our kids are usually doing projects completely on their own. For example, or with some guidance. For example, our welding three students are working on the tiny house. I saw them just recently. And the teacher was definitely there supervising, but the students knew what to do. They were doing most of the work and they were able to handle that on their own. Same with our small engines class. They were repairing lawn mowers. They each were working on different lawn mowers with different problems. They, of course, had some questions for their teacher, but they were very, you know, they were able to be working on one lawnmower and it has a different problem and they didn't have to ask or have their hand held. They knew what to be doing. That's an application level course. And it makes sense that that would be our smallest level because our students, as I said, might change their mind quite a bit, which is great. That's actually what we want to have happen in high school. So, that way, we're doing this now instead of when we go to college and we're paying a lot of money for it. So, we have less students in our application level classes because, you know, they may have taken, filled their schedule with intro or technical level as they got started. So, now at the application level, we have 31 sections of application level classes and 388 students in application level. So, total, total, we have 173 CTE sections on the schedule. We have 3,400 students enrolled. And I think you're thinking, "Well, we only have 2,200 kids," or "Less than 2,200 kids" in our class or in our school. So, 3,400 students is obviously more than that. So, we're counting students every time that they're in a CTE class, that they're in multiple classes and counting them as two students when they're really one. But this shows what a big impact CTE has in our school population. Nearly every student is involved in a Career and Technical Education course sometime throughout their time at Garden City High School. Any questions? We're going to move on to pathways. Any questions on the courses?
How develops the curriculum of course?
The curriculum is developed by the state and it's actually, on the CTE level, instead of being curriculum, they're trying to be a little more workforce-focused. So, our curriculum are called competency profiles and it's a list of skills that the student should obtain in that class. So, the teacher goes through and checks off whether the student meets that skill or not and at what level from zero to three, you know, of how well they're meeting that skill. Some of our teachers just use that for themselves and we use it internally. But one program, our welding program, they have been asked by their advisory council to complete that chart for each student on welding three, the highest level. They complete that chart and they've been asked to laminate it, so it can't be changed. And our employers that are looking for welders in the area, if they know that the student went to Garden City High School, they ask for their competency profiles. So, they really believe in our profiles that much that they use that for hiring process to see that and to see how well they were doing in those classes.
So, the state determines the guidelines for competency?
Yes.
And the state's state competency personnel that determine those guidelines, they are in the profession?
They're actually developed and looked over every few years. I'm not sure exactly what the rotation is. But they have volunteer committees of teachers that get together from across the state and address those competencies. So, it's really created by teachers with some state input by... Each pathway has a person at the state level who's in charge of that pathway. So, that person oversees when they go through the editing process.
Does it strike you as somewhat odd that the competency level for a particular technical education would be developed by an individual who's actually in the field? For example, not too many technical fields are not constantly involved evolving. And so, if you're certifying kids as being job-ready and the certification process is determined by people who are at the state and not necessarily experts in the field, do you see the...
I do and I should have mentioned. Every school's required to have an advisory council for every pathway and that's later in my presentation. But some of those members are also involved in the competency rating at the state level. So, they are looking to experts as well.
I have a quick question too on your, I think it was mislabeled technical, it was application.
Application, yeah.
31 sections, is that 31 classes?
Yes, 31 classes.
So...
Well, it could be, you know, like, we could have multiples of a class, but we don't have very many at the application level.
But that would then be very small classes for each structure.
Yeah. They usually are a little smaller at the application level just because of the number of students who decide after, you know, an introductory, a technical level course. This isn't really, for me, it's not what I want to do and so they don't follow up to the application level.
Do you guys survey the students on, you know, wondering if they might have an interest in something that we're not doing?
Could you roll that question for a little bit?
I'm always jumping ahead.
I've got a slide that's trying to address new pathways a little bit here. You're fine. So, now, let's talk about those pathways. What is a pathway? I already mentioned it's a sequence of courses, intro, technical, application. They build on one another to prepare students for a successful career in the high-skill, high-wage industries defined by CTE. So, why would our students want to complete a pathway? So, when they complete a pathway, at least, as I said, three credits and at least two levels, they're considered a completer. Students who are a completer, like I mentioned, they might get that competency profile laminated from the welding class. Manufacturing does the OSHA 10, so we're getting certifications for our students in as many pathways as we can. It's our goal to have an industry-recognized certification in every pathway. Right now, there's a few pathways we're just struggling to find something that's really applicable. For example, digital media and design, like yearbook and newspaper. There's a few journalism certifications that they can get, but they're not industry-recognized. The Telegram's not looking for those when they hire. So, we don't see a point in offering that to our students. So, we're still looking for something in some areas that would be a good certification. But we have OSHA 10 for manufacturing. We do first aid and CPR with our teaching, training, and early childhood education classes. And for visual arts, we do Adobe InDesign certification, which is an extremely hard test to pass. And we had four students take it last year and three of them passed and got their certification. So, that was, that was very good. Also, many of our application level courses are dual-credit with Garden City Community College if the student requests that or if the student's interested, so they can begin earning those degrees a year early and get, get out of school faster. Also, each pathway is required to have at least one articulation agreement with a post-secondary education institution. So, usually, these are just an agreement with a college to say, "If they've completed an entire pathway at Garden City High School, we will let them, we will give them credit for an introductory level class at our school." What's really great about that, we have most of ours through Garden City Community College, but there are now statewide articulation agreements where colleges have said, "Look, CTE is the same across the state. We'll take any of you. If you've completed this pathway, if you've completed the manufacturing pathway, then we will let you out of this intro course at our school." And that applies to all of, all of the students in Kansas who have completed that pathway. So, those are really good opportunities. They don't cost anything for the student. Usually, it's a free class for them that they offer. So, last year, we had 245 completers, so 245 students that took at least three credits of classes in at least two different levels in one of our 16 pathways that we offer. So, about half of our class.
Out of the 245, how many of them are certified in whatever it is that they were taking?
That is a good question. I do not know the number on that, but my guess would be 75%.
Do you have the demographics of those 245 completers?
It really mirrors our school very, our enrollment mirrors our school very well. I don't have actual demographics. Also, this goes to your question, Mr. Hannigan, about advisory council meetings. So, community involvement, we have advisory council meetings. Every pathway has to have two per year. And our advisory councils are people who are locally working within that industry who come and help guide us. So, they let us know if we need to update curriculum. They let us know if they have internship opportunities for us. They let us know if our equipment is looking old. They let us know if, all of a sudden, we don't use that anymore at all and now you need this. They let us know because there's no way that we can keep track of all of those changes. And so, we really rely on our community partners to help us with that. Many of our advisory councils members also come and speak to our classes.
How do you find and engage those community partners?
We usually rely on our teachers to search them out, although sometimes when a new teacher comes in, I help them, you know, but most, all of our advisory councils have been established for quite some time. So, sometimes we have someone who retires from the council and so we look for someone else to replace them. But we just look for anybody in town that's willing to come and help us out that, that has some sort of connection to that pathway.
Do you have a hard time finding and retaining those advisors?
Most of them are very excited to come to the meetings and to come back year after year and see how our program is growing. We do have trouble in some of our programs that Career and Tech Ed was meant to mirror the job openings in your community. And we have a couple of pathways that were brought in due to student interest rather than local need. And we struggle because we don't have much of that industry here, so we struggle to find people for that. Our biggest one that we struggle with is visual arts, which involves fashion design and it also involves digital design. And those two are quite difficult to find people who are, who are doing that full-time in their professional life. And I added, advisory council meetings are a great way for us to promote Garden City Public Schools and our awesome students to our teachers and their teachers with our community. So, when we have an advisory council meeting, our teachers show off projects that students have done and talk about what we're doing and they show, they usually have students come and talk with our community members about what they've been doing. And every time we have an advisory council meeting where students talk, our advisory members are just kind of blown away by everything that our students are doing in school. Okay, so what pathways do we offer? We have 16. I'm not going to read them all to you, but we have these 16. Audio/video communications, comprehensive ag science. I have them memorized if you want to test me later. I have them memorized in one very specific order and very specific order only, so you can't mess me up. So, a question that Mr. Cruz was starting to ask, I think, was, "Can we start new pathways and how would we do that?" Yes, we can absolutely start new pathways. We can, only the ones that are approved by KSTE. So, currently, there are 21 pathways that we do not offer. So, I listed all of the pathways out there and highlighted the ones we have. So, we don't have a pathway in animal science, but we do have comprehensive ag science. So, we have animal science classes involved in that pathway. We just haven't gotten so specific. But we have something for everyone. The only area that we're really missing is aviation. We don't have any pathways in aviation. But you can think about our state and think about what school district really does have a lot of pathways in aviation would be Wichita because they have a local need. We don't have that local need, so we haven't pursued that pathway.
What's the difference in your highlights there or is there any...
The highlighted ones are the ones that we do offer. And then the black ones are the ones that we do not have.
So, comprehensive agricultural science, we do offer?
Yes.
But the prior ones, we do not?
Right.
Thank you.
Yep. So, starting new pathways, recently, I have had a request from Southwest Kansas Area Builders' Association, which we love, and they call Swakaba. I don't know if they like that or not, but we do it. City County Economic Development Corporation, teachers and students still get to developing a construction pathway. So, Swakaba came to us and said, "We get together regularly. We meet and we started to realize that we're kind of old and there is no one else around to build houses. Do you have, what do you have for construction?" And through our comprehensive ag science, we have one construction class and we incorporate a lot of construction in some of our other classes like manufacturing, but we do not have a dedicated construction pathway. So, that is something that I'm looking into. It would require the addition of two new courses, likely be Carpentry One and Carpentry Two, but we have some options. The main challenge is finding space in a qualified teacher's schedule to actually teach these two courses. Our, I call them our basement boys, the guys that do manufacturing and ag science and power structural and tech, power structural and technical systems. Their schedules are full and their classes are full. So, in order to find someone else who can teach two sections of carpentry is just a challenge. And so, that's what we're facing right now with getting a construction pathway. So, then I just gave you a list of the CTE clusters. So, at Cooper Natural Resources, there were about five different pathways under that one. We offer one. So, we don't offer anything in architecture and construction. Business management and administration, that one is misleading because we have business finance. It's just under the finance cluster. We don't offer government and public administration or transportation, distribution, and logistics, but we have at least one pathway in all of the rest of the clusters. As I said, CTE prepares students for high-skill, high-wage careers. So, post-secondary success in Career and Tech Ed may look like a student beginning a career related to his or her pathway. It may look like a student starting their own business using the skills they learn through CTE courses. I had a teacher just tell me that one of his students started a business over the summer fixing lawn mowers. He charged $10 per mower and he made $80 this summer. To me, that is CTE success, but I think we need to talk to him a little bit about charging a little more. He could make a lot more money. It might look like a student attending Garden City Community College or another technical school. Or it could look like a student attending a four-year university. So, I asked our CTE teachers what they wanted me to share with you and this is what they told me. Our marketing pathway has opened a school store. They design and create and develop all of their products and they have been quite successful this, so far this year. And I asked for statistics on how much they have made and I did, she did not get back with me on that, but I was in a meeting and they have raised or made over $4,000. So, they're doing quite well. The teaching training pathway helped with the Be a Hero Teach event with Mr. Hogan and they had 40 participants. Four students in the early childhood education pathway got to attend the Kansas Association for the Education of Young Children Conference in Manhattan, which is not a conference for students. It's a conference for actual professionals in early childhood education. So, it was really great for our students to have opportunity to see that. Some of you may remember Javier Cervantes. He graduated last year. He was accepted to and is now attending Weber University at Yale Lewis. He's majoring in costume construction and that program at that school is rated number two in the nation. And he was a completer in the fashion and interior design pathway last year. Also, nine students from our high school manufacturing pathway are now at Garden City Community College and they have a picture for it. So, I'd like to thank you for your support of our CTE programs and answer any other questions that you might have about Career and Tech Ed.
Question. You know, I just, maybe it's phenomenal work here and opportunities that are there if you can fit it all in. And that seems to be the fundamental challenge at the high school is, I don't know what you call it, the big board, or how do you, how do you fit in all of the curriculum and the pathway opportunities and the teacher resources and the, you know, so that you have meaningful classes for the students in their pathways in a way that, that we have teachers actually to teach it, that we can afford. And avoid with some of the other scheduled realities, massive classes and then one or two kids in a class, trying to think. I don't know how you guys do it at the high school.
Mr. Kip really just manages that whole master schedule and we're not allowed to touch it. Just look. That's how that works.
So, I do wonder how we decided initially for, I mean, you said that the possibility of starting new pathways is there, but how were these ones determined?
Prior to me, I don't have a great way of answering that question, but my understanding is that we were already teaching some classes in those areas. So, as the state went to Career and Tech Ed pathways, we just looked at what we had and maybe filled in some gaps. But I think it also went a lot based on student interest. And I think that's where we ended up with having, we have a great program. I'm not dogging it in visual arts, fashion design, and graphic design. It's a great program, but it doesn't meet what the vision for Career and Tech Ed is for us because we don't have a lot of that industry here. So, the goal of Career and Tech Ed is that our students would be able to go out in the workforce and stay here in City County and work and have connections and we'd be able to have internships and things like that. And we are struggling to develop those connections because there's not a lot of that industry here in Garden.
Are the kids given any type of data about job opportunities, pay scales?
We have a very large book that they are welcome to check out with the Career Center. I don't think anyone has checked that out ever, but we do have that. We talk about in the intro level classes though, they tackle, we encourage our teachers to include the different directions they can go with that pathway. And we encourage them to talk about what the day-to-day job would be like. For example, we have students in wind energy. If they don't like being outside, that might not be a good thing for them because a lot of your day, if you're working on wind turbines, is outside. Also, if you don't like hikes, it might not be a good place for you to be outside working on a wind turbine. Those are very tall. So, we have them talk about external factors like that that might help them and also talking about pay scale and salaries and average, averages across the state and across the nation.
And Jimmy Crew Cruising, judge of that.
Oh, yeah. So, Career Cruising... So Career Cruising fits right in with career and technical education. They have all of those resources about everything I mentioned for not just every pathway, pretty much every single career you could ever imagine. They've got information on it and they have average salaries and just what the day-to-day life is like and.
And so every student takes a little mini assessment that factors their level of interest to different career opportunities, what the education requirements would be, what salaries would look like, where you would have to live to work in a environment like that. And so every student does.
So where does that database come from?
It's, what's the name of it now? Zello.
Career Cruising is switching to Zello. And it's a state-based.
But it's a, I mean, it's a program updated regularly, parents can get access from that point there, but students and it's a part of the IP.
It's just state, it's not a national program?
It may be, but.
It is a national.
Okay. The state of Kansas contracts with them.
Yeah.
That may answer one of my questions because I had one of my kids do it on dentistry and it was highly inaccurate. So I was just curious as to where the data comes from. And maybe that, because I only know what, what it is in the state of Kansas or Colorado where I used to live. I know from my colleagues, I do read our professional journals and stuff and it was, it was very inaccurate related to that. So I just, I'm, I'm curious if that's a third party that, or that's just something that the state does? Maybe when our fellow colleague is on the state board, she can look into how that data is assembled because I would hate to think that those career statistics are being given to high school kids or younger with that inaccuries, with the inaccuracies in all of the data. And I can assure you, it wasn't just a little off on dentistry, it was way off.
And I do talk with our Career Cruising representative, so I will let them know that you know, they're concerned there and see what they have to say.
I'd be interested to see how they assemble the data.
Yeah. I, I don't know for sure, it's just part of the program that they offer.
Is this something that we collaborate with the college at all? Because one of the things I'm seeing that we don't have is the Emergency and Fire Management Services and they have a very good fire program, or they used to have a very good fire program.
We are actually working together to develop that one as we speak. We got it approved last year and we just didn't get the enrollment that we needed to have a dual-credit class in Emergency and Fire Services. But if we can get twelve students interested, I mean, they do have to be a junior, senior, and they have to be willing to double block their schedule, so to say, two electives out of their day. But they can take Fire Science One first semester and Fire Science Two second semester. And as long as they also get their first aid and CPR, which we also offer at the high school, as soon as they turn eighteen, they will be prepared to test for the firefighter test and they can be hired immediately at the high school. It's an awesome design, we just need to get some students in it so it can get off the ground and get going, but we do have that. And I meet with Chuck Byford at the college regularly and we discuss ways we can collaborate, things that aren't working, things that are working, and how we can do things better. We meet probably once every two months to just kind of check in and see what things are and what we can do. Right now, I'm trying to help him get those articulation agreements. I'm encouraging him to get those written for the whole state rather than just for us, so that they can bring in more students.
And then how do you, like, how do you advertise or how do you promote interesting these programs? Follow-up with that would be, are the ones where you get some sort of certification more popular or what?
I don't think the certification makes the class, the pathway more popular because I think students who are, have an interest in something, they follow their interests whether or not there's a certification. I think it's not until they get a little older when they realize that that certification really is important to them. A lot of times, they'll come back and ask for copies of that certification once they've left us. I forgot the beginning of your first part of your question. How do I advertise? That is one thing, I think we're continuously improving that. One thing we started last year that worked very well was the freshman career fair. And we made sure that each of our volunteer business, community members that came in, I let them know ahead of time what pathway they would fit into. So when they talked with students, I asked them to encourage students to enroll in what classes they would encourage those students to enroll in. And that seemed to go very well. At the same time, on the same day, we had academy presentations where each pathway had an opportunity to present about their pathway within the academy. And I think that really helped our freshmen with enrollment, so we're doing that again December fourteenth, so just here in a couple weeks. I would like to get videos made for each course. I've been talking with Mr. Bernal a little bit. It's a big project, there's sixteen different pathways and each one has many different facets. So getting that project done might take a while, but I envision like a website where we list lots of common careers and that would link to a video about the pathway and what we're doing in those classes that you can kind of see. And list the course number and what they're involved in. We don't have that yet, but I'd like to, I'd like to have that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I could have a question. What's the element in your teaching pathway?
Um.
How's that going?
It is going fairly, I don't, I don't have it memorized. Fairly well. We have, at our application level, I think we have about fifteen students at the application level. I know our technical level classes are higher, and intro and technical level classes are higher than that. Another thing with that one that's unique is that teaching, training, and early childhood share some classes, which is where it gets hard. I can't tell you in a technical level course when it's shared between both pathways, how many students are early childhood and how many are teaching, training, until they get to that application course that is only teaching, training. But we also have early childhood as well. And within both of those, that pathway is full, they're doing well.
Extremely interesting. And Dr. Bernal, anything before we wrap up? Thank you so much for that information. I commend you for all the work that you're doing there at the high school. It's pretty exciting.
Thank you.
And I look at the list here and I can think of several other career pathways that, you know, like government and public services, public administration, there is a lot here that has a hub in Garden City, Finney County. And so there's opportunities, but you got your hands full already and we'll just keep, good job, keep working at it.
If you're gonna keep hiring new teachers, then I will keep adding pathways until then. We're kind of maxed out at the moment, I think. I don't think I have the teaching staff to be able to do anymore right now. But yes, I know we've got quite a few opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work. Thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely.
And, golly, there was a lot of information today on the old business. Why don't we move on to new business, IDG, Buffalo Living, Vegas.